I'm calling this meeting to open, to order. Welcome to the Monday, March 5th, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a phone or electronic device, I'd ask you to place it on silent. We will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that Clerk Domingo call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Okay, well, just wanted to mention that I placed before you, the Economic Development Corporation hosted an economic forecast, and there were presentations from the president of the EDC, the president of the chamber, myself, and a representative from the Upjohn Institute. So, the copy of my presentations before you, and those are some things that I noted, and hopefully, we could, we'll be able to discuss during our goal-setting session, once we get that scheduled. But seeing no further comments from council, we will move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you have before you a memo that I just handed out that highlights some of the points that I'll be touching on. The first is the Albion Legislative Day, which will be a meeting with our state legislators, as well as administrators in Lansing, it's being scheduled for March 14th. Mayor and council members are invited to participate in the planning session that's being held on March 8th as well. And the Legislative Day again is on March 14th. So if you're interested, if you can let either myself know, or Amy from the Economic Development Corporation. On the council goal-setting session, we were looking at this week, the week of March 5th. I only heard from two council members, so I think we're gonna have to look at a different week. So if you could let us know the preferred date and time for scheduling that work session, that would be helpful. And I'm going to ask Clerk Jill Domingo if you could help in coordinating any of those responses back. Also, you'd ask for a session on the council rules. And we were looking at availability the week of March 12th. We did hear back from three council members as to their availability actually on Monday, March 12th. So I do need some feedback if you are, the rest of you are available or interested in meeting on the 12th, or do we need to look at an alternative date. Michigan Municipal League, MML, has started this 1650 Initiative. Essentially, what they have recognized from various studies is that 50% of the workforce in government are female. However, only 16% are in the management positions. So they're trying to work on initiatives to provide training and mentoring to assist them to be more aware of the opportunities and to remove some of the barriers. MSU Extension, if you recall, has started the Civic Democracy Project. Their next meeting is going to be on March 23rd at 1:00 p.m., and again, everyone is welcome to attend those. The zoning rewrite, the next meeting is scheduled for March 15th at 7:00 p.m. That's here in the mayor's conference room. The Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, you should have received the invitation to their annual meeting and award ceremony. That will be on March 21st at 6:00 p.m. at Duck Lake. There are tickets, which are $35. And the next meeting for the Albion Marshall Connector is scheduled for March 27th at 11:00 a.m. in Marshall.
Thank you. We'll move on to presentations. Item A into Presentations, Oath of Office to Public Safety Officer Colin Morgan. Chief Kip.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to introduce to you Officer Colin Morgan. Colin comes to us as a deputy from the DeKalb County Sheriff's Department. He was working in the jail. He's already certified, but he doesn't have his fire training yet. He's a graduate of Marshall High School and is from Battle Creek currently. And she'll come up and do the oath.
I, Colin Morgan.
I, Colin Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Distarter duties.
Distarter duties.
Of City of Albion.
The City of Albion.
Public safety officer.
Public safety officer.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations. And Colin's gonna have his girlfriend come up here and leave and pin his badge on for him. She would like to come up.
And his son. And Colin was hired as a result of us getting the community policing grant that we got at the beginning of the year.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We will move on to public comment. Persons addressing the city council, essentially, city council should limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We asked if you observe proper decorum, and these comments are limited to agenda items only. And please state your name and address if you're going to address the council. Are there any public comments on the agenda this evening?
Hi, my name is Lonnie Brewer, 1200 Hillside Road. I'm here to discuss regardless of the project rights and project. I was honored to be told that the council, or a lot of people on the council board, wanted Double Vision to be a voice when it come to low-income family and at-risk kids. And the reason why this is so important to me personally, because I was one of those at-risk kids, and I come from a low-income family. My mother had nine kids. She did the best she could with all of us. She's kept us in program, best way she could. She couldn't afford to send us all to college, so she did what best. She put us in a trade school where I ended up getting a lot of certification with what I do, what I do now. Now, we're saying all of that, the reason why it's so important for me to be able to speak to the governor, because I feel like out of everything that the kids is missing, they're missing. The one thing that we didn't have, that support, that voice, that somebody that really understood what we was going through in the community when it come to being deprived of jobs, opportunity, getting deprived of opportunity, even try to go to school. We never had that opportunity because for the simple fact, it was always geared up to the kids that really was blessed already, had the opportunity. The parents already had money, had the resource, and so we was overlooked. Even though we wanted to be one of those kids to join in that opportunity, we didn't, we never had that opportunity. So what happened was, my twin and I, in '92, '93, we decided to go out and start a youth center for the kids. And it was pretty much a good success in '92, '93. But we was denied a building downtown because they really didn't want to deal with at-risk kids. And especially during that time, at-risk kids was a bad thing. You know, it just, people just felt like it was too much conflict. So what we did was, we decided to get our nonprofit lights in. In '97, '98, we became a nonprofit. The reason why we became a nonprofit, not for benefit us, because that's the case, we could've just start the business and profit, and just make a profit. But we wanted to do nonprofit because we wanted to give back to our community. So everything we done, it wasn't a simple of making money, it was just giving back to the community. So what happened, my twin and I, we wasn't very connected through the school, but we did a lot of fundraisers and things through the school. And we, but we just didn't get that love back in return when we became a nonprofit. So we're saying that, I was told that our voice really wasn't on the same level where the governor would want to hear us speak, because we're not on that level what the Albion community is trying to reach. And we just wasn't smart enough or intelligent enough to talk to the governor. And I took it as an insult because of the simple fact that my family, out of my nine family, my brothers and sisters have homes, been, all of them been working for 30 years, most all of worked 30, 40 years in paid taxes at City Albion. I put in 20 years of service paying taxes until I came to my own nonprofit, then missed work at all, stayed, raised my kids, continue to do what I gotta do as a productive person. I'm trying to speed it up. But we're saying that, I really want to let everybody know, it's an honor.
Mr. Yeah, your three minutes. So, yeah, your three minutes have expired.
Okay, thank you. Thank y'all very, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments on the agenda this evening?
Mike Bearman, 11016 29 Mile Road. I'm not a very good speaker, but I come to you and speak to you quite often. This time, I'm speaking to you because I, I've looked at the list that you put together for the meeting with the governor. And I've been working on this project since about November. And I really think this is a project that we can actually really handle very, very well. But when we start looking at who needs to sit down with, at the table, the mayor absolutely does. Should be running it, absolutely. But the mayor talks for the council. The city manager speaks for the city employees and the city inner works. She should be there also. Because without her there, a lot of the things cannot go on because of everyday work. I like that you've put on the EDC Board Chair, but the EDC Chair, the EDC Director should be there also. Amy should be there. There's a lot of people that I think you left off the list, and there's a lot of people that are, that were good. Everybody on the list that you put on the list needs to be at that meeting, needs to be able to be heard, needs to be able to be seen. But the ones that need to be at the table are some of the people that are gonna be able to look at it from the 10,000-foot level and be able to work with it every day. Thank you.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, council. John Fahey, 812 Northeast Street. I come tonight to speak to the council and the mayor. I noticed on the agenda tonight that your intentions to enter an agreement with Attorney Scott Smith, who was here within the last couple of months to discuss council responsibilities regarding its jobs and relationships with the city manager. And I find it quite disturbing that you are all considering wasting a lot of money on this venture when it's already been covered. We all sat here and listened to Mr. Smith at length, and anybody came online, and he was very, very easy to understand where everyone's responsibilities sit. And the fact that we are again, are gonna be wasting money on this with little discussion publicly about it beforehand is very disturbing to me, considering you're supposed to be the caretakers of our money. And I think a little bit more than this kind of short notice to start wasting money on this agreement without telling the public exactly what the intentions of council is with doing this, is really doing us all a disservice. I would ask you that you table that item or vote it down tonight, and make a better effort as council and mayor to explain to the citizens of Albion, why are you gonna waste all this money on something that we all thought was already dealt with? Thank you.
Is there any further public comment on the agenda this evening?
Hello. How's everybody? I'm Alita Johnson, 902 Boyd Drive, and I live here in Albion, Michigan, and I've been here since '75. I want to stand on the behalf of Double Vision Center, and I used to volunteer down there. And I think it would be a great opportunity if y'all were really looking to that and helping the young men. They have been fighting for this building to be open for a very long time. Without a vision, as I said, you will perish. And they have a vision. They have a great vision. It's for our teenagers. And there's a thin line between helping someone that have a desire to help your children. So many times, people look at it in a different way, but it really is a line in between that. You in the daytime with your children, having fun. When they get out of school, there's education for them, there's computer rooms for them. There's so many things that will interest our children, that will keep them out of misfits. I really think the board and different ones should really take another view at this place of business, the Double Vision. And as I volunteered and helped the children, I was able to help educate them. They will come in and do their homework after school and have fun. You know, it's something that you should really think about, because I believe in anybody that's helping children, it's a blessing. So you need to really think about it. I don't know who got any say-so over all this. I'm just here to be a witness that Double Vision is a good place for our teenage children. Because I've been there, I worked in there, and I experienced that. And it would be a great thing for our children. So taking into consideration that this would be a blessing for our children. God bless you.
Is there any further public comment on the agenda this evening?
Yes, good evening. My name is Lavisha McDonald, and I'm here today on the behalf of Double Vision. And I just wanted to let you all know that I am a patient at the University of Michigan. And getting gas vouchers from the state of Michigan, they, you have to do community service. And I do want to let you know, every time I had to do community service to get my gas voucher to go to the University of Michigan, Double Vision has always let me volunteer services. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on agenda items this evening?
Hi, yes. My name is Shani DeBrewer, 1319 Hillside Road. I'm speaking on behalf of Double Vision. I'm saying the same thing everyone else is saying. I grew up, my father is Lonnie Brewer, dancing from them, had stuff to do. They gave me something to do, you know? And then my son, I asked him to be honest, pros and cons about Albion, and what he feels about living here, 13-years-old. And this is what he wrote. There's a lot of things I dislike about, I mean, there's a lot of things I dislike and like about Albion. I like how there's a lot of negative, not, a lot of negative stuff happening. There's more stuff I dislike, though. I dislike how there is barely any schools open. There is not a lot of things for kids to do. We're bored at home. Thank you. Have a great day.
Is there any further public comment on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. We'll proceed to the consent calendar. This is for approval of regular session minutes from February 20th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That is approved. Items for individual discussion, discussion approval of agreement to convey property after demolition, and this is regarding the Derumpel School property. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'd like to invite our county, yeah, the county treasurer and land bank director to present on this. And the corporate counsel for the county.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I'm Brian Winsour. I'm the treasurer for Calhoun County. And as you know, we tore down Derumpel School. And at this point, we'd like to transfer the deed from the county treasurers to Albion. And I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything for Krista or for our legal counsel.
Well, I'd like to just jumpstart and say a comment and say, you know, sincere thank you to you and the staff of the county for doing that, because I know, having represented Precinct 3, there's a gentleman there who's about, I guess he'll be turning 100-years-old in a couple of months. And he always mentioned that. And so to see that that is cleared is really a fantastic thing. And so the, I know the residents around there really appreciate it. So we want to make sure, make, let you know, let you all know that we are very grateful.
Well, I actually had a chance to talk to some of the neighbors.
Okay.
And they were all very, very happy to have that building taken out of there. And it actually looks very beautiful. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to drive by there, but that property turned out very nice.
Thank you. Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. A question regarding the environmental. Do we, the question remained, we take ownership of this pending the environmental investigation, because if we get stuck with a site that we can't afford to clean up, then that's not clean either. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Sure. I mean, there is some contamination there, because some materials from Albion Malleable were brought to the site a long, long time ago. So we have an EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant right now that's in play. And once we decide who the property is going to, we can use those money, that money to finish the environmental, which would be a baseline environmental assessment and a due care plan, which would give the city the outline of what they need to do. Basically, it's, it would be like capping the site with dirt or concrete or something like that, is what we have been told. But we haven't gone all the way, so I can't give you a definite answer. Of course, we removed the building, and we brought in a lot of material in that area already. So, so we've done that part of it. Yep. I would say also, we can't start the EPA grant until we know who the end user is. I tried to start it already, but I was told that's a no-no. We have to wait until there's a decision by council. But the site should qualify. There shouldn't be an issue with that at all.
Are there any further questions from council? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, just I wanted to echo off of your comments earlier. I wanted to thank you for your work in demolishing this building. I did get your message.
It was a very good effort between everybody. I mean, the city, land bank, and the treasurer. I mean, this was started long before I came in. And I want to thank actually the past treasurer for maintaining and him is the property of the Calhoun County, so we were able to do something with it before it got transferred over to the land.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Seeing no further discussion from council, thank you all.
Thank you.
I will, I guess entertain a vote. Just no further discussion. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, request approval ordinance number 2018-03, an ordinance to amend Article V of Chapter 20, Section 22-05 of the Albion Code of Ordnance, medical marijuana facilities license applications evaluation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'd ask for remarks from the city attorney.
Sure. So this is essentially an ordinance to correct a small but important typo in the very lengthy ordinance that we put together. Basically, what's before you in Section 22-205, subsection B, sub-paragraph 8, the typo was, it read "past convictions of the applicant involving any of the following, but limited to," and then it gave the list that should've read "but not limited to." And so basically, the amendment just adds in the "not." The reason for this is when the council begins to evaluate medical marijuana facility licenses, it can consider the fact that applicants may have any of the listed convictions and things that the council needs to report that are not listed. So we wanted to make sure we got that corrected also, because the licenses, the main ordinance takes effect on the 20th. We drafted this as an emergency ordinance such that it would also go into effect the 20th simultaneously with the main ordinance, so there's not any lapse between the two. So they're simultaneous, because based on my conversations with the planning department, my understanding is the council's gonna start to get the applications ready. So, and that would require, incidentally, that would require a five-member vote.
Yes. That was my question. I was wondering if it would push back the effective date, but you've explained that, so, okay. Are there, are there any further questions from council on this amendment? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, so we've approved, I guess, some wording, a wording amendment to the marijuana, medical marijuana ordinance. Item C, request approval resolution 2018-06, to approve the awarding of water tower repainting bid to Seven Brothers, Seven Brothers Painting Incorporated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, Mayor and council, if you recall, we did receive the award of the special appropriation from the state MEDC for $500,000 towards the renovation of the water tower. So we did put out an RFP. It's being recommended to award that to the Seven Brothers Painting Company. The bid amount is $505,900.
Is there any discussion or questions from council? Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume the balance in excess of $500,000 is coming out of our water treatment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, we've approved this reservation for painting the water tower. Item D, request approval resolution 2018-07, to set medical marijuana license fees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, well, yes, well.
Sure.
Okay.
So if the council recalls, we discussed, I believe at our last meeting, setting the license fee for the marijuana facilities. The Public Act 1 of 2016 allows us to set an maximum license fee of $5,000 per individual license. At the present time, the council has authorized up to 20 individual licenses for any of the four types of approved facilities. Based upon my conversations with the manager and some of the department heads, given, as we discussed, given our limited staffing, I think $5,000 will easily be consumed by the time that's gonna be expended by the clerk's office, the manager's office, my office, planning department, public safety, all of those departments, given our city's size. So this was the staff's recommendation, and I believe it was a general consensus at the last meeting that $5,000 could be appropriate.
Is there any discussion from council on that fee? Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank our staff and our city attorney for doing that due diligence. I see this, I don't think, given how quickly we were able to expedite the sale of property at the industrial park at the last EDC meeting, I think that this is gonna help a lot. And it's gonna be helpful to help all the inspecting entities, whether it be John Tracy Shop or Scott Kip Shop. So thank you for at least doing that estimate and putting that language together.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item E, request approval of 2017- Item E, request approval of 2017 annual planning commission report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Would you want to just?
Sure. Mayor and council, according to the bylaws of the planning commission, they are required to provide you with an annual report of their activities of the prior year. And I want to take a moment to thank Lauren Freeman, our mayor core person, who contributed heavily in the preparation of this document. And that's what you have before you. It was approved at their last meeting, which I don't see the date recently. The planning commission did approve it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item F, and that, we approved the planning commission report. Item F, request approval of demolition of 608 Austin Avenue from solid waste funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved in support. Is there a discussion?
Councilmember Barnes.
Yeah, I would respectfully ask council to go to page nine in your current agenda minutes. It would be under section G. Or familiarize yourself with some of the statements I made at the last minute meeting concerning abatements, demolitions, the city's financial ability for demolition of this property in the 600 block of Austin Avenue. I'd like to reiterate that my concern is for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Albion. This building is a danger to pedestrian traffic. This building is a danger to vehicular traffic. And it is a health problem due to rodents residing in the building. And we don't know exactly to what level they are. As you can see, when you ride by, the front of the building has a large hole in the front that's open to elements. The rear now has large holes in the back open to elements. You can see the joists, the framing of the building. After seven years, the city is in a position to have the financing, $19,000 in its solid waste fund. This council voted to put there in case of a need, and the solid waste fund could cover the $18,000 projected to tear this building down. Our city attorney has put time in this, and he has come up with a nuisance lawsuit against the owner and received a judgment against the owner that the city made demolish the building. We haven't received any response from the homeowner. The homeowner, I mean, the property owner continues to pay the taxes. The property owner is currently in a military service, so we can't actively go after them right now to repay the money. However, this can be put on their tax roll. Also, I've been looking into the law, and I would have to refer to the attorney, because a lis pend or a partial partition, the city would be in a position, if we could perform those actions, is to place partial ownership on the property due to putting this type of investment and tearing it down. And the partial petition, we would claim that, hey, you know, we did do this, so we want our name to go on the mortgage. But I'd have to research that for other with Cullen. However, this area, 600 block of Austin Avenue, is a state trump. By that meaning, it's a highway. It's an interest to our, interest to our city. It is a blighted area. It's the only blighted interest in the city of Albion right now. It's a historical business district. It's a historical black business district. In order for Albion to be successful, the college needs to be successful, downtown needs to be successful, and the surrounding neighborhoods need to be successful. This area has been neglected for a long time. It's no fault of the city. That is private owned properties. And we have been trying to keep them to keep the property up to code and in a condition where they can open the businesses. But having dealt with some of the owners of these property, they have other ideas of, at this time, just letting it sit. I, so I'm asking the city to look at the historic situation and look at the renovations that we could start. We finally have an opportunity. We have two buildings that are on the NCAP that have come down. What was formerly known as Eddie B's, it was torn down. We finally got, the land bank was able to capture, tore it down. The church building fell down on its own, and the city made an agreement with them because of their finances that we would tear it down and we would allow them to pay us back. I am asking that we put our best foot forward and take this opportunity to start the revitalization of the historical black district. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? So, okay. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember French, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question about the estimated cost. It was around $18,000, but that was if there was no asbestos in the building. So do we know how costly this could be?
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. That amount given is just an approximate. We do not know what type of hazardous materials are inside. It could be, there could be asbestos in the plaster that's been used in it, or there may not be. Could it be other asbestos and other materials in there? In older buildings, we find that there's anywhere from a couple thousand onwards up to as much as 50,000 or 60,000 in asbestos. So we have one home that's at $60,000 to be. So there's no telling what you're going to run into until you get inside and have an assessment done on it.
Thank you. Councilmember French.
Given that, thank you, John. I would ask that we table this until we have more information. If we only have $19,000 in solid waste and there is asbestos, then we're putting ourselves at a much greater financial risk than if it's only $18,000. So I would ask that we consider tabling it until we have more information. I'm, philosophically, I'm in the favor of this, but I'd like to know a little bit more in terms of how much it's going to cost the city, at least temporarily, until the young man or woman comes off the military and can help repay the city.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone. Is there a second for that? Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. So discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Spicer, Councilmember Brown.
Well, I understand the speculation. However, we've had two buildings torn down on each end of that same very block. Eddie B's was right next to it and a much larger building. And there was no report of asbestos in there at all. So we're looking at a situation where we're speculating that it may be something there. It may not be anything in there at all. And we have no, we do have experience that there was none found in either NCAP building up there. So right now, the best available information is there is none in there. However, I wouldn't want to hold up progress based on asbestos situation where John made a speculation that, what, it could be another couple thousand dollars or something like that? And he said another building, but he didn't give the layout or the square footage of the building, you know, the $60,000. I'm trying to keep the progress moving forward because there is a owner, and that could be attached to her.
Councilmembers.
Just like I said, without having an assessment done on her, it's no telling. It might be, might be very low, but it may be a lot.
Councilmember Spicer, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Brown and Councilman French comments basically encompasses what I wanted to say. However, I do want to ask, is there a way possible that we could have some type of environmental study, somebody to go in and have a look see, to tell us basically what we're dealing with or not dealing with? You know, I get it, there may be $2,000 more, but you also negated there could be $50,000. And I totally agree, contrary to what might have been stated here, that that, those buildings, they do need to come down, and that area is blighted, and it's not a good look upon visitors entering the city. So I do support us taking a further look and to see what problems we have or may have, specifically, not in estimation estimations. I would like some data. That's my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown. Or did you?
I was just going to say, if there's something that council would like to do, and if the city attorney is comfortable at this point for us to have an assessment done, I can go ahead and get ahold of, see what it would cost for them to go in and type and get back with the council, if you want.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm in agreement with the assessment, but as Councilmember Barnes stated, I want to keep progress going, too. I don't want to table this and it be months and months and months. So I don't object to postponing the vote to approve the funding for this with a friendly amendment that we have an assessment done so we can have data, more accurate information, but soon.
Is there a particular date or meeting that you would want to do that? Because we can postpone indefinitely and postpone to a particular date or occasion.
If Cullen or John can, I don't know how long it would take to schedule that, but...
Or the cost.
Or an estimated cost of the assessment.
I mean, scheduling it is going to be one thing. And then when we locate a contractor to go in and do it, I mean, we're probably going to have to get an entry order because while we have a demo order, we don't technically own the property, and we don't, we'll have to get an order to go and be able to access the property. But that won't be difficult to obtain.
How timely.
I understand. The one question about that is, if we pursue that, is there a requirement for us to tear it down, sort of, per your task?
I mean, I would say this as a general thing. The city's got an overall obligation to watch for the health, safety, welfare of the public. And it's never a good thing to have structures that are in extreme disrepair hanging out there for long periods of time because a scenario becomes what if, you know, maybe children screw around, go in there, and the ceiling keeps in, and then somebody's killed. I think we've been proactive to the extent that we've obtained a demo order, and we've been trying to do what we can on the legal end, but the problem is, you know, we've hit a couple roadblocks. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think we can, I think we can get an entry order pretty quickly, one way or another. It's just a matter of finding a contractor to go in and do it. I think, but I guess that's, I think that's as much as the city really can do short of committing the money to tear it down.
Okay. So there's an amendment to, is there a particular date or just until we can?
Can it be done by the next council meeting or the first council meeting in April?
We can get word by then.
By the first council meeting in April or by the...
Definitely by the first meeting in April, probably by the next meeting.
I think it's the first meeting in April.
It's the second, I believe.
Yes.
So my friendly amendment to the motion to postpone is that we postpone it till the April 2nd meeting to allow time for more specific cost estimates and environmental issues.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Is there any discussion on that date? City manager.
In regards to the motion, does that include the expenditure of funds relative to getting those initial assessments?
Yes.
Can it, you can come?
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. We can use it out of the same fund, the assessment? Cost of the assessment?
If that's what you are indicating.
Frank, you're first.
Would you prefer that I get a quote?
That would be great.
And bring that back to council before we move forward?
That'd be smart.
I mean, it's up to council, right?
If you could get a quote by the, by the next meeting, the 20, the 19, can you?
Let's see if we can.
Okay.
Okay. So, so right now, we have the amendment to the motion to postpone, to postpone it until the first meeting in April, and with the understanding that the, a quote will be provided hopefully around the 19th, and so we can shoot for that first meeting. And then the attorney harness will shoot and work on the, I guess, motion, was it the order to enter, right?
Yeah. Well, between John and I, I mean, whether we do it, do it in order through the court or in the straight search warrant, we'll get in there one way or another.
Okay. So that's, are you, okay, you've heard that motion, including that. Is there any discussion on that motion that's been made and seconded? Councilmember Brown.
Just clarification. So on the next council meeting, we'll have an estimate for the assessment, correct?
As long as I can get one back from one of the contractors, sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can only...
I understand that, but the goal is to shoot for the 19. Okay. That is one to be sure.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Oh, did you have, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add, and just try to help me understand that, have we notified the property owner that what we are discussing right now? Because I just want to go in and just tear somebody's property down, and they not know.
The, the owner of the property did receive a copy of the judgment for ordering the demolition of the property probably two months ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that amendment to the motion postponed? Okay. All those in, oh, do a roll call vote. All those in favor of the amendment, would you please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. So now we're back to the subsidiary motion to postpone until the first meeting in April, and we'll do a roll call for that one.
This is to amend it to April.
No, so we... Yeah, this is to postpone it until April, the first meeting in April.
Okay.
April 2nd.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. So what we have done is we have postponed this item till the first meeting in April, which is April 2nd. And we should have, hopefully, we'll have cost estimates for the assessment by, around the second meeting of this month. And we can maybe, hopefully, take some action in April. Item F, request approval of Michigan Municipal League registration fees for councilmember attendance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember French.
Did I make it or did I not?
I didn't. I don't recall receiving a response from you.
Yeah, I was at it. All right.
Okay. One of the things as explanation the council has committed to doing last year and then in this budget is increased trainings. And so I know a number of council members will be attending the Michigan Municipal League Spring Conference. And hopefully, they can report back to us and share what they've learned. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item H, request approval, boards and commissions initial appointment, Albert Amos to the planning commission, and this will, okay, this will aspire in December 31st, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded.
Pastor Amos is in the audience. Is there any discussion from council? Councilmember French and Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. In the memo from our city manager, this is to replace Scott Brown, the remainder of In the memo from our city manager, this is to replace Scott Brown for remainder of his term, correct?
There was a, yeah, there was a, there was some confusion when I, yeah, it's, this is for the full term.
What?
This is for a full three-year term.
But it replaces Scott Brown's position?
No, it does not. No, there's...
This is replacing Greg Strands' position?
Yes. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I just have a comment with, relative to pastor, to Pastor Albert Amos. He is senior pastor of Bread of Life Ministries along with his wife Carolyn. They are homeowners and they own several properties in the city and make it possible for others to call Albion home. Pastor Amos is also a member of Albion Ministerial Association and is president of the Fifth Sunday Fellowship. He's a board member of AIM, the Albion Interfaith Ministries, and a contributing member to help Harrington's Backpack Program. He is a retired State of Michigan Department of Justice employee at the school as a technology instructor. I believe Pastor Amos will be a unique and valuable asset to the Planning Commission and will aid in the growth and development of the city of Albion. I unequivocally support this nomination and he also is a Presley residence, so, thank you.
As an additional thing, I want to make sure that, so like a number of the boards and commissions that we appoint, there's state statutes behind this and if there's any further detail, Attorney Harkness can explain that, but there is some language in there that I guess expresses the legislature's desire for when we're making these appointments to try to achieve as broad as possible representation from the geographic area of the city. So currently, the way the membership of the Planning Commission is set up right now, there are three precincts that have no representation on Planning Commission, so 1, 4, and 5. And so, as Councilmember Spicer mentioned, Pastor Amos is a resident of Precinct 5 and his ministry is in Precinct 1. So, you know, trying to start to make sure that we have representation from the other precincts. Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Brown, oh, it's us, Councilmember Barnes.
Okay. My concern is when I was doing my homework and research, I read here where Mr. Amos was gonna take Scott Brown's remainder portion of the term. That's why I had a different take on this because now you're telling me this is about Greg Strands' formacy. Am I correct?
Yes, there was a, yeah.
In order for me to elaborate, I would be very concerned that Greg Strands said he didn't want to do it anymore because even though you used your justification based on precincts, that's not a prerequisite of being on the Planning Commission. My concern is Greg Strand was instrumental in getting grants for Holland Park, instrumental for getting the trailways, instrumental for getting other grants around Albion and he really, really is instrumental as a citizen in Albion doing positive things and being part of different organizations and he really made things happen financially for different projects around here for the entire community. Specifically Holland Park, he did a lot of work getting money in there. So, I'm thinking Mr. Amos would take partial and Greg Strand would come back because at the last council meeting you heard my statements that I think that if he wanted to be on, there's no reason that I can see based on his performance in the planning why he should be removed.
Councilmember Reed.
I'm in, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm in total agreement with Mr. Barnes. I know that Mr. Amos is completely qualified to do that, but I know that this looks like a manipulation to get Greg off. I think we talked about this before too because when I was trying to get things done out of Holland Park, he helped. He wrote grants so that we could get that history healed. He wrote grants for other, we're working now on a grant for a pavilion to go out there, $57,000. And he says, sure, I'll help you do that. And you know, just like Mr. Barnes said, he's very helpful around the city with grants and things that have to be done. And I really, as far as Mrs. Slater, I went in to check on her because I know that you can get two people from out of town and that don't live in Albion, but it said that they should have some connection. And so I went through her, made some calls about some different things and found out that twice she's lost jobs because she didn't want to follow directions. The next time I found out that, when I looked, went through her Facebook page...
Point of order, Mayor?
Three pages of things, there was one thing in there that related to Albion, nothing else.
We're talking about Pastor Amos' appointment on planning.
Okay.
And the comment began about Mr. Strand, Strand, Andrew.
Okay.
So...
There are things here.
At the point of order, because the comment, the comment went off and it wasn't about either individual. It went about, I don't even know who.
Okay.
But anyway, I really don't think, and Mr. Strand does not want to be off. He wants to be on and I really think it would not be a good move for Albion.
Councilmember French and Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna echo what Councilman Barnes and Councilman Reed said. I've known Greg for a long time. We all have seen the input he's provided for our city and the good work that he's done. I know Pastor Amos, he would be a fine addition to the Planning Commission, but I think that Greg brings a level of expertise that Pastor Amos doesn't have the same experience. It's a different experience. I recognize that voice is valuable, so I'm hoping that we can find a solution that gets both Pastor Amos and Mr. Strand to remain on that. And you have that, you have that authority, so, thank you.
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. So I echo Councilmember French, you as mayor do have that authority. My question is, the grant writing that Mr. Strand has done, has he done that as his role on Planning Commission?
As a what?
His role on Planning Commission, is that why the grant writing has taken place? Is that something he's done in his capacity on Planning Commission?
No, that's his capacity.
Okay. So that's your question?
That's my question.
Okay. I can't, I can't answer because he's not here and I can't, you know, speak to that, but I think the, well, I'll let Councilmember Lawler speak and then I'll have a comment. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Has he expressed concern, Mr. Strand expressed concern about he still wants to be on the board or...
Yes. So, as, I have a comment and then Councilmember Barnes and Councilmember Reed. So, basically, and it's actually helpful in the, our packet this week, in the presentation from the Planning Commission, there's a really helpful description of what the Planning Commission does and what it is, okay? So the purposes of the Planning Commission include preparation, preparing a plan to guide the physical development, so it means the geographic area of the city, of the city of Albion, and to continue to keep it up to date thereafter, right? To promote the adoption, execution of such plans by the city, school, county, and other governments and agencies responsible for making public or other improvements to the city municipality. Affecting economics in the city through the recommendation of wise expenditure of funds to provide sound development, encouraging and assisting public and private agencies in improving the attractiveness of the city municipality, working toward a planned community for the city by officially adopting a plan to guide the physical development of the community and then further cooperation between governmental and private agencies towards these ends. So essentially, what the Planning Commission is doing is it's providing council with advice on how we structure growth and development in our city. And so in a task like that, which is affecting the future of our community, it's important that we have as many and as diverse voices as possible that have connections to different parts of the community, whether it's geographic or different community organizations and those kinds of things. Now, does that mean that everyone on Planning Commission has to be an expert city planner? No. That's why we have staff, that's why we can consult with contractors or, you know, people who have technical expertise on that. One of the concerns that I have and because we went there, you know, I did pull the previous nomination, but one of the things that's interesting is even in that past nomination, that person went to Bryn Mawr, had a bachelor's degree in city planning, went to University of Pennsylvania Ivy League School, had a master's in city planning, and there was pushback on that. So what I'm saying here is if we look, which I did with the city attorney in detail to the requirements that the state gave for appointments to the Planning Commission, I think it's important that we have voices from different parts of the city that are gonna guide and help us as we move Albion forward and it's deeply concerning to me that we don't have anyone from Precinct 1, 4, or 5 on Planning Commission. Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Reed.
I would like to have some clarity. The mayor seats makes the recommendation or what we call the nomination. However, council has to confirm that. My solution in this, because in my reading, just because there's a spot open for someone outside of the city, it didn't say that that eliminates Pastor Amos and Greg Strand. Me, this is easy. Greg Strand could take his position and the pastor could come in for Scott Brown's opposition. If I was doing the nomination, that would take care of that situation. Also, Greg Strand's grant writing was part of what we can say the electives or alternatives to being qualified to be on the Planning Commission because it stated you needed to be in some other avenues, being productive in the city, having a stake in the city, and he did using his grant writing for the entire city. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
I agree with that, plus like the trail that they're putting through. He's helping to write the grant for that, so he's got to know dimensions. He's got to know what, where you can access and things like that. I am just, this really upsets me because I'm on the Planning Commission and I know how much help he has been and to just get somebody else who is not knowledgeable of that at this point in time of Albion moving forward, to me, makes no sense. And I know that he questioned as to why he wasn't being considered for being back on there because he's done so much on there. So...
Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilmember Brown's question on if there was a duty associated with Greg Strand being on the Planning Commission, it was leveraging the skills and talent that he had and the information that was provided because he was a member. So essentially, he was working on the comprehensive plan, so he had the intimate details associated with what our planning was and how to leverage that with the grant writing that we needed. And it goes also to the recreation plan. So it was because of his involvement as the planning commissioner that he was able to write the grants that enabled us to receive the Michigan DNR Trust Fund grant for the $300,000 for the trail expansion. We don't have a planner on staff, so being able to have someone who's very intimately aware of the language that's in our plans and to make certain that language is inserted in our plans that allows us to qualify for the grants has been very beneficial to us.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote to...
What you're voting on?
Yes. This is to approve the appointment of Albert Amos to the Planning Commission for a term to expire in December, on December 31st, 2020. Okay. Roll call vote.
No more comment?
You can, I mean...
Do you wouldn't be willing to change the recommendation to Pastor Amos to take one seat and Strand take the other street so we can have them both?
Right now, we're gonna vote on this appointment.
But if we do that...
There's still an open seat.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
You're not going to, you're not...
Councilmember Reed.
Go ahead.
Don't you? I was acknowledging for you to speak.
So, so I need to understand too, so you, if we vote to put Mr. Amos in here, then you are going to, in the next person that is, is going to, that is going to be filled too. What's your consideration there?
I have to consider it, yeah. I have to consider it. I decided to ask the council...
I don't want to be put in a box.
Yeah. Well, I think right now we're just, we're just voting for the term, the three-year term for Pastor Amos. So... Councilmember Barnes.
You're not willing to postpone this and to bring it back after the nominees, the both seats at the same time? You put them both down? Next time?
Not right now, thank you.
I'm just trying to help.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
No.
Barnes?
No.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item I, request approval of engagement, agreement with Attorney Scott Smith of Dickerson Wright, connection with review of the council rules of procedure. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved and seconded. As just a brief review, there were some questions raised about what's going on. So the first time that counsel, that Attorney Smith came to us, that was to do an overview of just council manager form of government and because he did a terrific job and I think we all appreciate his insights, we've asked him to help us kind of review the council rules of procedure, which he looked over cursory, but to have a deep dive on that. And so as a component of that, council will be meeting to discuss concerns we might have and have that meeting with him, so he'll be able to draft those changes and return them to us. Is there any further discussion? And this is for, this is to not exceed, I believe it's $1,200. Councilmember Barnes.
Did you all, as already have the study session among yourselves, pick and choose what you want?
We're doing that as a council.
Who, what are you talking about?
At the last meeting, I just thought we were all gonna get together and do the council and the work session and see what we wanted him to do.
Yes. Yeah, so we have to approve it and then we're gonna set that meeting and do that.
Let's pick a card before the horse, Amy. Should we discuss it first and see what we, the work that we want in the review first? That's just my thought, I'm not trying to give you a problem. Do you?
Councilmember Reed.
So to address Councilman Barnes' concerns and then to ask me a question, just I was, because I was, I'm sorry I was not at the last council meeting, but what Councilwoman Brown and Mayor Brown and I talked about, what was requested by our mayor, was that Attorney Scott Smith, in his meeting with us, drafted an eight or nine-page summary of what our charter said with regard to council roles, rules, et cetera. And our mayor wished that that be added to our council rules as an appendix. We then spent some time in follow-up meeting talking about how agenda items could be added and who had that authority and whether or not we needed multiple council people and so, and that's why we're in this position now. Am I correct in that sort of summary?
Yes. I mean, I think a good example of what we're kind of up against is, so I'm, like I said, this is not to detract from the hard work that Councilmember French, Councilmember Brown put into it, but I will say that, you know, for example, I don't know, for example, item... So, for example, this evening, item J. Okay, that was submitted on Thursday. So technically, it would violate the Rule 8 because it wasn't on the, I don't know, by noon on the Wednesday preceding the meeting. But the problem we run into, you know, which the attorney pointed out is there's actually language in the charter that says things can be put on the agenda up until noon of the day of the meeting. So there's no rule that we can create that can change the charter. So in light of that, I think we're gonna have to have some discussions about how do we balance this need for the council to be representative of the community and also not to do it in a way that's burdensome to administration. So that's kind of something that, like, and I'm not an attorney, neither of us are attorneys. So that's kind of something that, like, and I'm not an attorney, neither of us are attorneys, so that's something we didn't catch, and so that's why I think this is important to do. Councilmember French.
Thank you. So given all of that, my question is, why are we using another attorney to evaluate those sorts of issues when we have a city attorney, we have a retainer? And so that's my question.
I think it's the same reason why, when we have labor negotiation contracts, we have a retainer for a law firm to cover that, so there are, there are areas of specific law that I'm very confident and very pleased with the work that Attorney Harkness and his firm has done for us, but I think sometimes it's important to have the expertise, and so I think that it's worth it, because we want to make sure that we're doing things right and can do things decently in order on the council, so. Councilmember Barnes.
I totally disagree. This is a situation of rules and procedure, where we read and we comprehend, where we read, we sit down as a council, and we discuss it, and we bring it to Cullen. I think that, in my opinion, some members are going too far outside of our city attorney to another attorney, where there's really no merit for it. I think that Cullen can always give us a legal opinion on the charter, that's his job. The charter rules Albion. Council procedures are just that, procedures on how we're going to do things, A, B, C, D, E. But the law is the law of the charter. Without the charter, there's no Albion, Michigan. And Cullen should be the person that we defer to when we're talking about the charter and the rules of the charter. And we're, we should be astute and intelligent enough as elected officials to be able to put rules in place where we can follow them with dignity and respect when we choose to do so.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So initially, we brought Attorney Smith in to define the roles of mayor, city manager, and council. And at that time, we voted to bring him in, because Attorney Harkness did not want to be put in that position. So we, we voted, we brought him in, he did an excellent job, we talked and voted last time to bring him back to help us polish these rules and procedures off. So in keeping with the momentum of moving forward, I would really hope that we would utilize him to polish these rules and, and procedures, so we can keep moving forward. That's my comment.
Councilmember Barnes.
I just want to be clear. I voted no each and every time. Thank you.
Okay, well, okay. Is there any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Attorney Harkness.
I'm just going to offer, I appreciate everybody's comments, and certainly I see, I think Mr. Smith does excellent work, and I see his work on these roles as continuation and extension of the work he did with defining the roles of the city, so I'm, I mean, I'm fine with it, but what I wanted to offer is a, for example, the example that the mayor used, the issue with the setting of the agenda, I mean, this is something you can certainly discuss with either Mr. Smith, please here, or with me, but you, I mean, there's, there's two competing sections of the charter, one that says you can create your own rules, and one that says, here's how to set your agenda, so you might want to consider a charter amendment and just eliminate that section, and then you're kind of free to do what you want with your rules, so.
But, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you, Attorney Harkness, and I'm hoping that when the council moves forward and we schedule a work session, that you'll be able to be a part of that. And, okay.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. My, my question was only to give you the opportunity to explain to the public exactly what we were hoping to do with Attorney Smith. I'm not opposed to...
Oh, okay.
Attorney Smith being in contract, but I wanted you to be able to explain to the public...
Yes.
And gave you that opportunity.
Yep, so basically, just summarize that, we have a city constitution, the charter, and, but in terms of how the council operates and how we, the agenda that you see, that you see and pick up here at the podium each first and second Thursday, excuse me, first and second Monday of the month, what goes into making sure things are put on there and are dealt with in an orderly fashion, that's, that's a portion of what the council rule does, council rules do, as well as allow us to have orderly meetings as well, so. Seeing no further discussion, city manager.
Just as a point of clarification, I just want to make certain that he's being retained exclusively for the council rules of procedure, so I do believe there was a communication that seemed to go outside of those grounds, and I wanted to make certain that we are consistent in how we are retaining him for his services.
Yeah, I think the, the contract we're, or the agreement that we're approving lists the framework for what we're asking him to do. But we appreciate him for his, you know, the clarity that he brought to the council about the roles of the council and the manager. Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Discussion regarding Project Rising Tide kickoff and invitations. So I guess, who asked me to put it on there? Well, I guess I'm a, oh, Councilmember French.
So I asked that we have this conversation, just to give the public and myself some clarity. You and I have had a phone conversation today, so if you just want to, Mayor Brown, if you want to provide and city manager Mitchell, some context for what's going to happen on Friday.
Okay, so, the governor, Governor Snyder, in this, I guess the last months of his term, and I guess they've been doing it for a couple of years now, actually, but it's, it's picking up, there's a program called Project Rising Tide. It is a way to, for example, the largest city in our state's Detroit has received in the last couple of years, a major support in different ways from the state, considering the difficulties that it's been facing, but Project Rising Tide really is an opportunity for the state to look at smaller communities. I had the opportunity to be in Paw Paw earlier today, which was the community right before Albion, and they're around maybe 3,000 to 4,000 people, but the idea is to have the state and its various agencies assist community, communities in addressing, planning in terms of economic development, community development, marketing strategies, and so a lot of the, you have a lot of input from the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and some of the other executive departments. As part of that, the governor, there's kind of, there's like an initial opening, official opening for that, for those initiatives in the, in the selected communities, and then there's also a, a closing ceremony, which is what I went to in Paw Paw today. Part of this initial kickoff is the opportunity to have a panel discussion with the governor, and so we, the manager and the EDC president and I met with three representatives from the state last Tuesday, and did some touring of sites, but basically, what this issue is about is the panel where the governor solicitors, solicits, he solicits information from community stakeholders, and so there's, there's basically a panelist of people who will engage the governor, and then there's other people who will be in the audience. And so at the time, we were under the understanding that the event would actually be taking place today, so there was a rush, and so we would not have met as a council by the time it took place. So what, what I did was solicited names from the manager and EDC president, and then called each of the council members, solicited names, and compiled a list, and sent that. And that's when we thought we would have 35 individuals on the panel and 20 in the audience. On Friday, I was notified that we'd have to cut that by 10, so we did that. One of the things that, when I spoke with the representative from the MEDC, the idea is to allow the governor to, I guess, to hear the pain points in the community that we're dealing with, right? And so that includes anything from what we often hear about, what I hear a lot about from residents is, let's say, if I want to find a home or a place to live, the housing stock in Albion, that's something that can come up. If there's something in terms of, you know, business development and the steps to guide a developer who's interested in coming into the community and making that smooth. So the, one of the things that Albion is actually in a good position relative to is the RRC program, right? So we've, which is a redevelopment of a community, so we actually are pretty advanced to that, and thanks to the city manager and the staff at the EDC, so they're, we're a little ahead of the curve, but what I did basically was, and I guess I'll read the email that I sent to council, and compiled the list, basically the list prioritizes community-based voices, so I looked to see, okay, who are people who are residents of the community, have networks within the community, broad networks, balances demographics, right? So we want to make sure it's representational of, you know, different demographics in the community, reduces representational redundancy, so, you know, there's certain people who wear multiple hats, you know, I wanted to avoid a situation where there was one community organization that had, you know, four or five board members represented, so that was a component of it. Make space for reasonable disagreement. We live in a city, and, you know, there are people who have different experiences here, and so we want to make sure that they're, those voices are heard in a way where it's constructive criticism, but not, it's not going to derail the conversation, because we do want the governor to know that Albion is in a moment right now where probably once in the past, what, 30 or 40 years, is an opportunity to improve the community, so we want to have, at least be on, on board to work with the program, and then basically an understanding of economic development broadly. Councilmember Barnes has talked a lot about Austin Corridor, we know that there's work being done on the downtown corridor, so we want to make sure that we're touching all parts of the city. So that's really the genesis of, of the list. And even after the governor's gone, there's going to be a lot of work done on the administration, administrative level, and so I think a lot of stuff's going to be hashed out even then, so this is that chance for community members to have that voice. Councilmember Barnes.
I really want this to be seamless as possible with the governor. This is an opportunity of a lifetime for Albion, and this is bigger than all of us. This meeting can still spearhead development 30 years down the road. This is a collective list the council would put together and agree, agree on, but I'm going to step aside, and I want to ask respectfully if my name could be removed and the EDC President Amy sit in my place. I really think without the economic development, which is the profession of our, our city, and it's a branch of our government, they should be in the room for the conversation. So I'm asking, Amy, would you take my place? I'll be asked.
I'm actually listed as an attendee already.
Yeah, point of order, one second. Yeah, yeah, okay, so give a response.
I was at the table, I'm just saying, I'm asking the mayor, I'm supposed to address the mayor, so I'm asking the mayor, but I didn't see her name on, on this list, I saw it on the first list, is this the new list?
It's, yeah, it's, yeah.
I was going to see Amy's name.
Thirty-six.
Okay, I'm...
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that the list was carefully and professionally put together by all the people that you had mentioned tonight, and I just want to thank everyone that had the input of this list together, and just say that they did a good job.
Any further, okay. Councilmember Spicer, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick comment that I am excited about the prospect of this meeting and where and what it could lead to and mean for the city of Albion. We see and know Albion is on the rise, and I hope that we can clearly help the governor to see where we need some assistance and to help us to continue to grow and be the great city that I know we can be. Hope people come with, not complaining and knocking people, but great ideas that we want to leave with the governor to help us to get from this point further down the road, a positive direction, moving forward and rising. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you, and I echo the comments from Councilmember Spicer, and I was thrilled when the EDC, state EDC contacted me in regards to this opportunity to participate in the Project Rising Tide, which is an initiative especially by Governor Snyder, and they asked who should be invited in the initial conversation to see if Albion was interested, and I invited Amy DePraise from the Albion EDC and Mayor Brown to participate in the initial conversation on the phone, as well as the meeting with the representatives, and as you said, we did tour various sites, and I want to express appreciation to the Luddington Center in making their site available to us. What wasn't made clear, I think, in the conversation is that there are two elements, two levels of participation. One, those stakeholders who will be participating in the question and answer with the governor, and the others are participants who are invited to be a part of the audience. And if you recall, after we composed an initial list, it was far too large, and we knew it needed to be reduced. So although we all value everyone's input and involvement in the community, there's a limited number of seats that are available in regards to this meeting. So Mayor Brown did consult with Attorney Scott Smith in regards to, who really had the authority relative to comprising the list, and reached a determination that is really the council. So it would be helpful to get some input from council, whether you affirm this, the list that is before you, as well as how do you intend for the invitations to the participants to go out. Also, I want to bring to your attention that Emily Pets, the representative from MEDC, just sent an email out this evening that indicated that although we did a great job in condensing the list, it is indicated that there seems to be an over-representation of some of the smaller businesses, and it might be appropriate to have someone from the Economic Development Stakeholder Group to be a participant, and I would recommend that you at least consider having Amy DePraise there, because she is most knowledgeable relative to all of the economic initiatives that are happening in Albion, and I'm also appreciative that I have now been added to the stakeholder list since I wasn't in the initial list that was presented to them.
Councilmember French.
I would agree that, that Amy DePraise needs to be at the table. I honestly don't have an opinion on who would not be at the table. You've got a list of 26, 25...
Twenty-five.
...on there, and, and so I would ask that we can, we can get her on the table. I'm not sure how best to do that, because I think every single one of these 25 would have something to say, but I agree with our city manager that, that not having the Economic Development Corporation president and CEO seems counterproductive to what the governor is expecting at this meeting.
I, I guess one of the things I want to clarify, maybe very, very direct, so the chair of, well, I guess the chairs of, of planning are on there, or the chairs of planning, the chair of the Planning Commission, the chair of the Downtown Development Authority, and the chair of the EDC is on there, okay? So the chair of the EDC is the college president, and the chair of ARC is also represented there. And so one of the things we want to make sure is that, again, we, we don't overload on just one particular project. I think that's one of the things we want to make sure is that, you know, Albion is, it's the college, but it's also Albion Street and post-industrial air spaces. It's affluent and people with PhDs, but it's also people who have issues with, you know, life post-incarceration, or, or, you know, high school level education, or no high schools, like, high school level education. And so what we don't want to do is to only say that one particular class of projects are important. We want to make it say that we want to talk about food deserts, we want to be able to talk about really issues that community members are facing, and so, you know... And so, you know, if, if, if I know that that's what's going to be said, I'm okay with that, but I just want to make sure that the conversation is actually reflective of what is actually going on in the ground in our community of Albion. Councilmember Spicer, councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. May I, is, has there been any consideration given, will this session meeting with the governor, will it be videotaped or televised for people who are interested in seeing what actually went on? Has there been any consideration given?
My, my understanding, I think the media will be there. I don't know if they're going to record the actual session. I don't know. That's something I can check.
I meant from the city of Albion, then.
Um, we don't have the technology to do that. Yeah, for, for onsite videography. So, councilmember, French, councilmember Barnes.
So, using your own example, Mayor, a bit against you. I don't see anybody on this list of twenty-five other than our EDC director who can talk about food deserts. So, as, as our city manager has said, according to an email from the governor's office, we're oversubscribed in small business. Maybe we could take one out and replace it with our, and I'm, and I'm also going to say that, that when it gets down to the individual weeds of what the EDC does, I'm going to argue that the board president newly appointed probably doesn't know the ins and outs of how the EDC and what programs it's been doing over the years. And so, again, I'm going to argue that, that having the EDC director at the table is.
Just as a, I have a comment, then, councilmember Barnes. I, I'm on the panel, so I, I'll be able to bring up food deserts. So, that's something that I've been actually working on and championing as a member of, of the EDC Board, is the need to increase, I guess, alternate access to healthy food that is at a reasonable price. And so, you know, being in the board meeting, some of the responses I've received have not been supportive of that. And so, that's a concern of mine. So, councilmember Barnes.
Again, I want this to be seamless. We, we have to go into this, this setting, putting our best foot forward. We will have the attention of the state and the nation. The governor was the director of the State of Michigan Economic Development Corporation. This endeavor grew out of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, this, this, this program. And it's just business sense, and there's no rational reason why we would go in a room with these professionals, these senators, these representatives, and not have our city manager at the table, which she is now in the second, this, the second copy, revised copy, and we don't have our head professional in business and technology and TIFRA, our EDC director, at the table entertaining questions if necessary, or giving explanations if necessary, on the condition of bringing citizens and businesses in and explaining any questions necessary to the audience and the governor. It's just, it's just unimaginable that we would go in there with that lack of foresight as a council.
So, what, so that I don't belabor the council and, and those who are here to participate, so I want to respect that. If, if council will tentatively approve this with the understanding, I'm going to motion to approve this with the understanding that I will make, make an adjustment and do that. We can move forward with that. I'll, I'll make that change. But one of the things that, one of the things that I want to make sure, because like, the council, for example, there was shared, and what the manager passed out, there was a memo regarding the lobbying day, and I'd advise council to be able to read that. This is not the sole opportunity that the city and its elected and administrative officials will have to lobby and entreat the state level to, to provide and assist us in doing that. So, what, what I, I will, I will acknowledge what you're saying. So, what I'm going to ask is a motion to approve it with the understanding that the EDC director will be added to the panel. But like I said, I think the council, and this might actually, hopefully, if we can schedule the goal-setting sessions quickly, this can be a discussion, because I think there, there's a lot going on. But I think we want to make sure that we're listening to community needs in the decisions that we're making. So, is, 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 can I entertain a motion to approve this with the addition to the panel of the president of the EDC?
So.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Thank you. Item K, Discussion of Community Development Organizations. So, I, I ask for this to put, to be put on the agenda. The, the idea was, I know several months ago, there was mention made of the existence in some communities, municipalities, of community development corporations. And so, I'm interested, I, my thinking was maybe the information was provided, but even right now, it's on the agenda, so I'm willing to, because I, I placed it on the agenda, ask it to be removed, but, but next time, if, when it comes back, it'd be helpful to have just some information about what it would take for us to do that. So, just in the interest of time, I'm going to ask that that be withdrawn. So, I don't know if we need to change the agenda for that, but do we need to change the agenda for that? If I propose to. I'm going to do it as a feature. Councilmember French.
If you need an agenda change, or will a tabling be sufficient?
We can, we can, we can postpone. Yeah. Does, is your motion to postpone?
That's what I, that's what I'm just asking, which you prefer. I will make a motion to change.
Postpone.
Our motion to postpone, and so we have more information.
Postpone.
I move that we postpone the discussion of community development organizations until such time as we have information to make a discussion properly.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Do we need a roll call? We'll do that voice vote. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Item L, Discussion Neighborhood Planning Council.
Thank you, Mayor and council. If you recall, one of the projects that we have relative to the AmeriCorps Vista Initiative is the establishment of neighborhood planning councils. So, Andrew has been working on that. He wanted to come forward for just a moment. And he, we have included, I believe, in your packet, the draft bylaws for such an organization, which interestingly enough is similar in concept to the Citizen District Council. And just as a side note, I was elected and served on a Citizen District Council in Detroit. I'm pretty familiar with it. So, if you can let me know what it is you would like to know, I can include that in the next agenda packet. But we are hoping to move this forward. Andrew is setting up meetings with each of you to get your input, as well as references and questions, concerns, any individuals who you might think within your precinct might be interested in participating. And if we don't get a, a whole lot of concerns raised, well, we're hoping to actually bring this back to you at your next meeting to introduce the resolution for your adoption, and moving forward in April to have an all precinct meeting, and then we'll have them break out into their respective precincts to have a more detailed discussion so that we can formulate these neighborhood planning councils. Some of the initial thoughts relative to what they would be doing is, as you know, we're doing the rezoning rewrite. So, what are the zoning elements that would be meaningful to the local residents, especially in terms of repurposing for housing? What type of housing development would make sense within their precincts? It's an opportunity to work with the public safety in regards to neighborhood policing. It's an opportunity to have beautification projects going on and making certain that residents are connected with rehabilitation resources that might be available to them. So, it's all apart, it's related to the RRC in that they look forward to having citizen engagement opportunities, and this is just one of the tools that we hope to have in place.
So, I have a, just a couple of questions, and I was going to ask this on, on Wednesday, too, but. So, what, what, what is the role of a council member relative to their, the, the neighborhood, if I'm saying it correctly, neighborhood planning council?
Right.
In their precinct?
Right. So, the idea for council members, city council members, is to act sort of as a liaison or ex-official members between neighborhood planning councils and the city council, so they could receive feedback from members of neighborhood planning councils, or they could provide suggestions about ways to move forward on issues or on initiatives that they're taking, but not that they would be running the neighborhood planning council, not that it would be, you know, you know, a subset of the city council.
Okay. So, and then who, so with, with the, so let's say they meet quarterly, I'm just making that up. Who, who would be the, the kind of administrative person making sure that, you know, because, well, two questions. How, how is it going to be, the logistics for, how is that going to be handled in terms of an administrative, like, scheduling thing? That's one question. And the second is, is it open to, is there a set number of people per precinct, or is it just whoever is interested?
Right. So, the first one, members would choose amongst themselves, they would nominate people from their precincts, they would elect them to positions, whether that's the chairperson or the clerk or the secretary who takes meeting minutes and, you know, provides announcements for next meeting, or initiatives that they're taking, that sort of thing. And with regards to how many people, we're just going to leave that up to each, you know, group to decide how many people they want to have in their group, you know, whether, whether it's the number of officers, or whether it's the number of people in, members of the council, you know, sort of two separate things. But we're not going to try and dictate, you know, you can only have a certain number of people.
Yeah.
It wants to be open to everyone in the precinct.
The, the, like, so the one concern I have, just like I said, from a governor's standpoint, I get the, I get the point of making sure you have kind of grassroots communication with, with residents, but I want to make sure it doesn't pit, pit the, the elected official in the, in the, in the precinct against a group of, a group of, of residents who may not, who might not reflect the entire precinct. So, I think that's one of the concerns that basically what I'm trying to get at is, and I'll have that discussion.
Yeah, and that's part of why I'm trying to be with everyone on the council, so I can get your concerns about that, and hopefully can work forward to those issues.
Councilmember French.
I would respond, if we think about the model that, that we used to have in our community, whether they would be neighborhood watch group or just a group of folks, because they're open to every precinct, you would hope that people from all points of view would be part of that neighborhood planning council, so that, so that in those meetings there could be that dialogue. I think in my, from my perspective, I would attend those meetings, just so I could, that would be a place for me to be able to articulate to that planning council, who would then be able to disperse that information by word of mouth, or through a newsletter or something to the rest of my precinct. And so, it's, the idea would be that it would be organic, but we're, by creating these structures, it sort of gives an opportunity for, for, for good note-taking, for making sure that, that the ideas and, and views of, of people in each precinct would have, would have that voice, and that that voice would go beyond just the neighborhood conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I, I still have some concerns, but we'll, we can talk on Wednesday. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay.
Now, to everyone in the audience, if this is something that interests you, please see me after the council meeting's over, and I can add your names to the list for people who are interested.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask council to reconsider medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay. Attorney Hart, miss.
I'm actually going to come in and counsel with the proposed amendment to cemetery ordinance.
Okay.
Discussion, hopefully.
Okay. And then also, what we, thank you, Councilmember French, what we postponed this evening is, is basically some general information on community development corporations.
Wait, corporations or organizations?
Corporations.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any further future agenda items? Okay. And while we probably, because the manager made mention of it, can we set the 12th for the goal session? So, councilmember French.
My move, we set the 12th for the goal session.
Well, we can't, well.
Is, is that it?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. Is it 7:00 PM? Is that the proposed time?
Yeah.
Seven to nine?
Hopefully. So, I know three councilmembers are okay with that. I'm okay with that. Is there anyone who is not okay with the 12th at 7:00 PM for the initial goal-setting session? No, this is for the, the goal-setting session. Councilmember French.
Will it be facilitated?
What, what I anticipate is, is probably a kind of review of what we've already done, because we already set almost like a, I guess essentially almost a two-year set of goals. So, probably a review of that. So, that, that will serve as a basis. I don't think it need to be facilitated. Is there, are there any, any, I guess, critical conflicts with that from any of the council members? Okay. So, March 12th will be the initial goal-setting session at 7:00 PM. And then, the doodle poll for Attorney Scott Smith is still out there, so please respond to that. And I think it's still out there. So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that. I'll, yeah. Are there any future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Everyone's here. Okay. Public comment. Persons addressing the council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, and please state your name and address when you come up. Are there any general public comment this evening? Comments?
Oh, my name is Clarissa Lewis Graham, and my address is 712 Hoagland Drive, Albion, Michigan. Can I present these papers?
Yeah.
I was trying to get a daycare open here in Albion, and I have talked to the, some of the council members, and John, and some of the council members. I just need some clarification tonight on, I have a daycare, I've been running a daycare, adult foster care home for ten years. And I think, my opinion is, they're mixing up the daycare and the adult foster care home. Adult foster care home, you got two. You got adult foster care home, group home, you have adult foster care family home. These are homes where people have to stay in. Adult daycare is where you bring your family members there, and they just there from like six in the morning until probably six or seven at night. I never heard of anyone have to stay in a business, uh, place overnight, or you can't run a daycare, because I'm not living in it. I did get, I did some research, the papers that I gave you, is that's what it's talking about. You can have a daycare. It's not qualified to have license. You don't have to have license for that. But adult foster care homes, you do have to have license for. So, the clarification that I need is why do I have to stay in this business place all night when it's no one going to be there at night? I even talked to a guy from Lansing, and I think he even called down and talked with a couple of people here at the city, where he said that, you know, you got your city organs. I have looked at some of that stuff. It's all that stuff, some of that stuff is just above my head. But if I can just get the clarification, why I can't do this daycare, because it's not a. not a foster care home, a foster care group home, and a foster care family home, that's where you need the license at. But adult daycare, you do not need license. I know you have your city organs, I've been through the computer and have someone, have other people going through it with me, to try to get some clarification on it, and I just can't get it, and I don't understand why I can't open this daycare. It's something to better the Albion community, when family members got families there that can't get out, this daycare is just to take these people in, to give the family a break, to get away from them for a while, come back and pick them up two or three hours, or whatever.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Victoria Williams. I'm sure you, nobody probably knows me, I'm pretty busy, and so I play, stay pretty secure, but I'm sure most of you know my husband, his name is, I call him Bobby Williams, but most of you would know him by Ba Ray. I've been a friend of Clarissa's for a long, long time, I've been a nurse for 46 years, and that's where I kind of come into, am going to help Clarice. And when she spoke to me and told me that, you know, what she had been told by a lot of you, and I, I spent a lot of time on the computer, and I went in and looked, and I looked at all of the ordinances of Albion, and the zoning, and all of that, and what everybody had sent her, either on, through email or through the mail, and I said, no, Clarice, they, they have these two zones, or ordinances mixed up, you know, you need to talk to them about that. And, which she did, but they still kept telling her, no, and I said, no, they just have them mixed up. And so, that's when she talked to the mayor, and so did I, and I just wanted all of you to see that Albion has no adult daycare anywhere. The closest one to us is in Jackson, and when I looked farther, it's actually in Spring Arbor. The thing that's the most important about the daycares, adult daycares, is that in Michigan, they do have certain regulations, and the, one that's the most important to me, is because you have to have an RN that kind of oversees things, directs it. Even though all it, I should say all, one of the main things that the adult daycare does, is it does things to help a lot of the seniors, things like polish the nails, play with them with puzzles, does a lot of talking, which I love to do, and I love to listen to them, because they like to talk about when they were 14 years old, and things that they did. I love to listen to those stories, because it's things I used to do with my grandma. And I would love to do those things again, I miss them. And so, I would just love it. I also wasn't sure, and I said this, and I'll quickly finish this and be done, I wasn't sure if it was that you guys had misunderstood, or if it was the zoning pieces that you guys were looking at.
Your three minutes have expired, but what you've said is duly noted, and I'm, we will follow up.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Can you please state your address for the clerk?
Oh, 707 Orchard Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any, is there any further public comment this evening?
My name is Levita Weeks, 917 Luther Drive. I just have to voice my disappointment tonight, that you didn't listen to Lynn or to Barnes on Strand, you just didn't pay one bit of attention to someone who's done so much for Albion, and continues to do so much. You just threw him away. Also, Mark Lilly has been to this podium more than once, asking to be on a board, and his name has never been mentioned, just like you overlooked him too. Why? Two good people. You did resolve one of the problems tonight, my other concern was that you didn't have Amy and Cheryl at the table. I'm glad that they are now at the table.
Is there any further public comment this evening?
Hi, my name is Robbie Patterson, I live at 412 East Porter Street, Albion, and I'm here again about the lights that need to be on Porter Street. I was here two weeks ago at the meeting about the light, we don't have any light on Porter Street, there's only, I think, two lights that lights up over there on Porter Street. The rest of it is dark. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Commissioner Tompkins.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, City Manager Mitchell, Clerk Domingo, residents of the city of Albion, and folks watching this evening, good evening, my name is Gary Tompkins, and I'm your county commissioner. Just got a few items for you this evening. First of all, we'll start out with some good news from the state. House Bill 4321, which is an appropriation bill, calling for an additional $175 million for transportation and roads, what equates to $38.2 million for cities and villages. This appropriation will provide an additional $65,926 for the city of Albion for roads, good stuff there. Cowan County obviously will also benefit from the appropriation of one-time of $873,000 as well. The bill was passed unanimously by both the House and the Senate, which is waiting the governor's approval. This is a one-time appropriation, the money is limited for use in construction or preservation of city streets. Obviously, good, always good to get some additional money for roads, being what they are today. Also additionally, the steering committee meeting relating to the Eastern Cowan County Trailhead Acquisition and Development Project, which is a partnership initiative with Albion College, took place on February 28th, which included county, including myself, Albion College, state, and local partners to discuss timelines, the next steps for the project to be funded with the $239,000, $31,900 MDNR Trust Fund grant, and the additional $100,000 state appropriation grant as well. The concept of Phase One of this project is develop a trailhead with parking area, signage, basic amenities, along with construction of an extension of the existing Ironbell Trail System, and demolition of the existing housing on that current property. Future plans also envision a, excuse me, a campground with infrastructure enhancements that will complete, complement regional recreational opportunities, and boost economic development in the area. So currently, the next steps will include grant contracts and land purchase agreements for County Board of Commissioner approval, which I anticipate we will approve at our March 15th meeting, and an application for the 2018-19 MDNR Trust Fund Development Grant, which is due April 1st. So again, good news certainly for the city of Albion in terms of economic development moving forward. One thing I did point, one thing I did come up with today, happened to notice that Michigan Department of Transportation just released its 2018 road project schedule, and interesting enough, Superior Street's on that list, from Vine to Ash Street, with a repair and install of new brick pavement, from Vine Street to Ash Street, with a expected timeframe of May through July this year. So we'll see whether or not that actually takes place, but information for you folks just was released today, as a matter of fact. Finally, do you know of anybody that may be delinquent or behind on their 2015 taxes? If so, contact the Cowan County Treasurer's Office to see if they may qualify for an extension, so that they can certainly avoid foreclosure on their homes. So just a brief notice information there. And as always, my monthly newsletter has been released, and if you're not, if it's, if you're not on the email list, and you're interested in receiving, please drop me email, which is on the bottom of the email, or, excuse me, on the bottom of the newsletter. Hard copies are available at the Albion District Library as well, and it's a great resource to know what's going on in and around the 7th District. In the newsletter this month, on page three, I do reference the five upcoming Cowan County recycling events throughout the county, including events for household hazardous waste collection, electronics and styrofoam, and the Big Recyclorama on April 7th in Battle Creek, that will accept many various items that are included in my newsletter. All events are certainly open to Cowan County residents, so again, lots of opportunities for everybody within Cowan County for recycling. That being said, unless there's any further questions for me, it's always a pleasure to be with you folks each and every month, so have a good evening, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Bearman, 1101 629 Mile Road. I'm glad to see a lot of the things that you've done tonight, but there was, I keep seeing you guys drawing lines at the border, and not wanting anybody from outside Albion to help you, or you don't want any credit to go to anybody outside the border. Strand is an absolutely tremendous person, he may not live inside the city, but he is an absolute asset to this town of what it's doing. I was, I was disappointed not to be invited, one way or the other, on the list that you've got, after I've been working on that since November. Also, we've got a lot of other things going on right now, and if you've got some things that you want me to bring back to you from the Workforce Development Board, we're having the executive board meeting on Friday, and I'll bring it back to you from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayors, city manager, council. My name is Ronnie Sims, address 710 West Erie Street. I just wanted to commend the city of Albion for supporting the first annual Black History Program last Monday. It was very successful, and we collected 325 tickets, so there were 325 people basically in attendance, that did not include all of the volunteers that helped with the program, so it was an awesome turnout. I just left the Blues at the Bone before I came here, it was a great turnout there, so the music and celebrations that are taking place here in Albion, I think, is a great thing. Even the entertainers tonight said that we have a jewel, and we need to appreciate it, because once somebody find out that we have a secret here, they're going to want to come and take over Albion. So, we really need to be appreciative of the Bone, Nancy Doyle, and everybody that's working to bring the entertainment to Albion. We will be doing, the Studio of Albion will be hosting another celebration for Mother's Day on May 14th. It's going to be something to behold, so we want everybody to come and get your tickets early, because I think we're going to sell out this time. There's only 400 tickets that we get, and we were at 325 this time. So, we just want to ask that you continue to support the activities that are happening down at the Bone, and also, tonight, we started the Albion's Young Gentlemen's Club tonight, it was very successful, we are meeting at Sterling, his one winner's t-shirt tonight, Sterling Books and Brew, and the parents showed up, and they were very, very pleased for the start, and we are trying to connect with the school systems, we already connected with Harrington, and we're going to try to connect with other school systems as well, so keep that in mind as well. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, one and all. Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street. I'll be as brief as possible. As usual, I am here representing your wonderful American Legion here in Albion. Just want to mention a few quick things we've got going on this month. On the 13th is the Boiled Dinner. Come on down and have a great dinner, it's going to be cabbage, potatoes, carrots, and corned beef, and I believe that's going to be $8 a head. It's going to be a great time, should be, I think, 4 to 7 on the 13th. On the 15th, as most people will not know, this is going to be the 99th anniversary of the Paris Caucus for the American Legion, the first meeting that was held to discuss the coming about of the American Legion, and one of the people that was sitting at the table was Teddy Roosevelt's son. But we're going to kick off this year, and I'm going to try to do something at least every month within the paper, or something around town, just to keep it in everybody's mind, and we'll do a year-long celebration of the American Legion until we hit 100 next March. And finally, our monthly pancake brunch is going to be on the 25th. As you all know, $6, and the best pancake breakfast you'll ever have. With that, I make a motion we adjourn.
Is there any further?
Louis Terrio, 803 South Superior. I don't understand how you can remove an individual that brings economic dollars to the city, and that would be Greg Strand. That shows to me an incompetence in the government that's in place. I would think you would try to do things that are for the greater good of the entire community. You were offered an alternative to not removing Mr. Strand, and you ignored it.
I would like to thank you again, and I really kind of, I really want you guys to feel the impact, why I'm doing what I'm doing, I want to introduce this young lady.
Hello, I'm Dani Shabroy, 309 Booth Drive, on behalf of Double Vision Center and Cornania Faith Homes. First things first, just to let you know that they are very passionate about they, what they do at Double Vision, as you know, and they do have visions, and if, I think we could just find a middle ground, so that we can get everything going for the youth in Albion, because it's a passion for many people here in the community, I know many of you have done work with the youth, and so if we could just kind of find some middle ground to get something going, I think that would be great. And then also with Cornania Faith Homes, again, with the elderly community, and the mentally disabled community, to also bring something, because we're kind of lacking in those areas, as we already know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further?
Wanda Kemp, 703 Valhalla Drive. I was just sitting, and I'm listening to, people say, opportunity, things that's happening, shaking and moving, it sounds like. Where my disappointment come in at is, and I'm not here to represent or speak on behalf of anyone, I just look, it seems to me, my personal opinion, if you're not connected to Albion College, Star Commonwealth, or Oakline, things are not happening for people around here. So I would just like it to see fairness and opportunity for all, not one group of people or one area of people. There are people here in the city with visions, and it seem like they get shut down if you're not tied in or locked in. I'm very impressed with what Oakline, Star, and Albion College is doing, but I also see our youth, they're lacking, they're our leaders. When are they going to become a part of the city? When is it going to be important to have opportunity for them to do things, so that they don't have all this idle time, and then we don't have to worry about our children ending up in jail, because we have positive things like the Gentlemen's Club, the different areas where our youth are considered. So I really want you to consider some of the things that's being offered when it comes to making a way to keep our youth off the streets, doing positive, productive things for their lives.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? I will say something, so this was, there's a memo about the legislative day, I'm going to ask council, if you can, if I understand this correctly, there's a meeting Thursday, Thursday's the 8th, correct? At 9:00 AM, to attend this, this is very important, because, like I said, I'm just seeing this now, this was just given to me now, but these are the priorities that are going to be advocated before our state representatives on our behalf. And so we want to make sure that we know what's going on, and that it aligns with the goals that the council has adopted, and so if you can, please make that meeting. Like I said, this is the first time I'm seeing this, but we want to make sure that we're there, and that we are participating, because again, what's being asked of our state representatives is being done in the name of the city of Albion, we want to make sure that we know what's going on. So, that's a personal ask to each of the councilmembers, if you can, to attend that meeting. So, with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Of course.
Move in second, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, thank you, this meeting's adjourned.